Good morning, welcome to council time for Clark County, Washington Council. It is Wednesday, September 20. It's hard for me to say September 20 because the month is going so fast. But we welcome you and we have a meeting today that starts with two work sessions, one on planning assumptions, one on essential public facilities. And then we move into council time and that is followed by a couple of executive sessions. So let us begin and we start with planning assumptions. And staff, would you please kick it off?
Good morning, Madam Chair. For the record, this is Oliver, OJACO Community Planning. And with me this morning is Jose Alvarez, Land Use Program Manager. And I believe there may be other staff online, including our legal counsel. Counselors, this morning work session, if I may premise, is the starting of discussion on planning assumptions. We are not asking or requesting any action from council. So this is going to be only informational. There are discussions and issues that are being raised that we are trying to walk through them. And at some point, we are going to come back to council in another work session and perhaps a hearing. We're also going to go through the planning commission to vet some of this out, including allocation and determination of capacity where everyone will have the opportunity, including the public, the building industry, and so many others to just provide their input concerns and we go through that hearing before we come to council for your final decision or final direction. So I just want to premise that this is more of informational to council. And I will get into some of the conversation and discussions that we're having with our local cities and the type of information we are requesting from them to help us get to a point where we can all agree on the current capacity before we even talk about allocation. I just want to premise that. So for this, as I said, this is just a starting of, a starting point of a discussion on planning assumptions. And if we can go to the next slide, just to quickly, giving my initial opening remark to just provide the council as part of this informational work session. The first item here on our agenda is the progress to date. The counselors have already selected a population forecast, that's not new. You have also selected employment forecast for us to use. Those are the two main inputs that we are going to use in doing the allocation going forward. The last work session we had with council was an overview of the Vacant Buildable Lands model. We did not ask council to make any decision or change any of the script in the way that the model is run. What do I mean by that? That work session was an overview of how we use the tool in our planning process. What does the tool, what does the VBLM do? How do we use it and what is going to change in the future? We did stress to the council that we are going to run the model going forward based on zoning. That is part of the requirement consistent with the House Bill 1220. We made that clear that we are no longer going to run the VBLM based on compliance designation, but rather on zoning. So that is what is going to change. There may be other things that will change, but that will come at the direction of council. For the purpose today, as I said, this will just be an informational work session, but you are free to ask staff questions because there've been some comments and some issue raised prior to this work session. So I will go over the, what I'm calling general land use principles or guidance that we have to be aware of when we talk about planning assumptions. Then I'll go into review of previous planning assumptions that the council have used. I'm not suggesting that the council use that, I'm just presenting it to you as information you should be aware of before we begin conversation on what the future planning assumption would be for this 2025 plan update. Then we'll talk about next steps. So let's go to the next slide. This slide is really more of what I call land use guiding principles, nothing more. I think what we are saying here in bullet one is that when we consider, and we have done this in the past, when we consider sizing of the urban growth boundary in collaboration and coordination with our local jurisdictions, what we have done is to get to a point where, this is more of an aspiration, is a goal, if I may say, to find a way to create balance in terms of the distribution of our land use residential, commercial, and industrial. That's really what this bullet relates to. The other, on number two, we are required where possible, when I say required, this is by statute, growth management statute, we are required where possible to provide a break or green spaces between communities and using natural boundaries to do that. We were not able to achieve that when you look at the boundary of Washugo and Carmers, they're touching. There is no way we could have created a green space, if you will. So that's what this item two is getting, where possible. You can see when you look at our map that Barrow Ground and Vancouver, there is a space between them. They're not touching. Ridgefield and La Centre are not touching. Neither is Vancouver, UGA to the north and south of Ridgefield, they're not touching, at least not yet. So we will work as we grow in the future to create that green space where it is possible. That's what that is really talking about. Item number three, this is more of what we also are required to do. We meet monthly with our city partners. So we will continue to coordinate and collaborate with our local jurisdiction in the allocation process I mentioned earlier. And then in examining the proposed boundary, if any, when we get there. Finally, item number four is consistent with the public participation plan that the council approved in the beginning of this process, which require us to facilitate involvement by the general public as well as the development industry. So this is, as I said, is consistent and we are carrying out that function per the PPP, Public Participation Plan that the council approved. On item number five, what this city gets to is, I think there've been a concern that if and when, if at all, we were to expand the urban growth boundary for land for jobs, that we do it in a manner where we are not bringing land that are environmentally heavily constrained. So we try to minimize that going forward. That's what this bullet is really reflecting to. Next slide. Again, counselors, this is again more of informational to you. We did, as required by state statute 5253, to submit our Buildable Lands report to the State Department of Commerce three years before we start this current planning process. We have completed that and we completed that by the last council and I cited the resolution here, so that's what that represents. The second bullet there talks about addressing new legislation and we cited House Bill 1220 and 1110. 1110 doesn't apply to the counties, it only applies to the cities. And here in Clark County, there are three cities that are subject to House Bill 1110. The cities of Vancouver, Carmers, and Washugo. That bill, which the council can, you know, read on your own, review on your own, that calls for a city like Vancouver to plan for six-plex in their single-family zone. I think for Carmers and Washugo, I think it's duplex or four-plex. I have to go back and review that again, but that is not subject to Clark County or to the counties. 1110 is subject to the cities. House Bill 1220 is the one that led us to the development of the Housing Action Plan. And we have been working to make some code changes to implement that housing study that the council approved. I can report to the council that the question that you provide us to staff, we are going to resume meeting with the Housing Forum beginning October 5th to begin to respond to those questions and hopefully come back and get some action by our council. When that happens, it's going to also help inform us going forward what type of densities and what type of issues we have to be concerned with. We are similarly asking other cities, all the local jurisdiction and Jose can get to that later in discussion with you this morning, counselors. We are asking the cities as well, those that are subject to the 1110, to provide us information based on their zoning. If they have adopted any development regulation as called for in 1110, we need to know that. We need that information in addition to areas that are currently within their jurisdiction. I don't have information on what does R9 mean in the city of Vancouver, in the city of Carmers. We need that information. What does that mean in terms of density going forward? We need that information to help us when we read on the model based on zoning so that we can get to what the actual capacity is. And I agree on that, that everyone will have the opportunity to take a look at and validate before we go to a hearing or come back to the council. So that's what we are going to be doing. And when the council approves the proposed changes to our development regulation as it relates to housing, we are also going to incorporate that going forward. The other bills, I'm not going to enumerate some of them here, but for example, House Bill 1337 relates to ADU. We have made those changes in the proposal that we made to allow up to, I believe, 1,000 square foot for ADUs excluding porches and garages. And also that bill allows now that you can allow two ADUs on a single lot that could permit that. It is premature for me to say to the council, who's going to be building that? I don't know. You haven't passed that yet, it's not into our development regulation yet, but assuming you were to pass that, we're going to include that in estimating what would that mean in terms of density going forward. We don't have that yet. The planning assumptions on bullet three, again, relates to the decisions that the council have already made on population and employment. As I mentioned earlier, that would be the major input that we are going to use when we consider the allocation process in addition to agreeing on what the existing current capacity is going forward. Next slide. Counselors, these next two slides are just for your information only. These are the previous planning assumptions that the county have used. You may say this is starting in 1994. You can see the population on the second row there that the council was planning at the time, 416,007. And you can see that in column two in 2004, 2007, and 2016. You can see the difference in terms of the actual growth number that we are planning for or we use in those plan update. In 94, it was 123,000, 147,000, 192,000 in '07, and 136,000 or 137,000 in 2016. You can see there that the council have used what I may call, or what is often referred to as the urban rural population split. What that means is, as we plan for new growth, what is the percentage of that growth that will be, we could allocate to the urban area? And what is the percentage to allocate to the rural area? Counselors, you know that in the urban areas, that's where you have the necessary infrastructure to grow. So we put more growth in the urban area than we put in the rural area. I believe that if you look from 2004 to 2016, the counselors or commissioners at the time have maintained the 90-10 split. And we are having conversations and looking at some data to help us adjust this number. I don't know what it will be, but it cannot continue to be 90-10. I'll leave it at that, it could become 95-5, it could become 92-8, I don't know yet, but there have to be some data to support us and come to you for you to make that decision, what you want that split to be. The annualized population growth rate, you can see what it has been throughout the last four or five updates. And then the housing type ratio, in 94, it was 60% of the new housing unit or housing type would be single-family and 40% multifamily. When we did with assistance from my partner here, when I say partner, I mean my staff here, Jose, we did the first plan monitoring report going back to 1999 and 2000. We find through that work that the county and the cities were not even coming close to the 60-40. And that was then later changed to the 75-25 you see across from 2004 to 2016. That ratio is going to change. I don't know what it's going to be, but as we work with the cities in establishing capacity and then providing us information on as how, what type of density they will see in the future. And this house bill that I mentioned now requiring four-plex, triplex, townhouses, and cottage housing in our single-family district. And the same will be true for our local jurisdictions. We have to have a conversation based on some data to say, okay, do we maintain the 75-25 or do we change that? So that is a conversation yet to be, a decision yet to be made. And then you can see what the persons per household average have been, starting in 94, 2.3, and have been progressing to 2.66 that was used in 2016. I will point out, and I think the council is aware that when Scott Bailey, who we relied on to provide the employment forecast, when he did that employment forecast, he relied on the most current persons per household coming out of the, I believe it's 2021 American Community Survey, which is part of the census, that was 2.67. And I will get to that later. We are beginning to have conversation with the Department of Commerce because they are using a much smaller persons per household in the housing tool that they provided to cities. So we have resolved that and I'm continuing to have conversation with them. Next slide. Again, continuing on the past or previous planning assumptions, you can see here, I don't have to go through this, but you can see what the new jobs are for each of the years we have updated the plan and what the jobs to housing ratio was. In 94, '04, and '07, we didn't, the council didn't really make a decision or a firm directive on that until 2016, when we combined that with the average job to population ratio and came up with the idea of the one-to-one ratio, which is aspirational goal. The council confirmed that when we went through the forecasting for jobs numbers. The infrastructure deduction, this is an area where there have been significant discussion. And in 2022, I believe, this number was changed to 31.4%. And there are some who would like to see that number, this is onsite infrastructure. There are some that would like to see this number lower, or some would like it to be lower. There are some studies that suggest that it should be lower. When the Buildable Lands Advisory Group looked at this with so many studies that was done, and it was, I would say it was more of a compromise, and Jose may correct me if I'm wrong, we did consider that we are seeing some, given our recent changes to our Stonewater regulations, that number was adjusted to account for that. And that's how we arrived at the 31.5% for onsite infrastructure. There's another part to infrastructure which is off-site, particularly schools and parks. The council at the time made a decision that that off-site infrastructure has to be looked at when we are sizing the urban growth boundary. In other words, rely on the information from the school district capital facilities plan as well as our local parks department when they submit their capital facilities plan, what acreage are they saying that they need? Rely on that in making that decision on what the off-site or what type of acreage to be brought into the UGB when sizing of the urban growth boundary. Staff is not at a point of sizing the urban growth boundary, but I just want to emphasize that that was how that was resolved in 2002, or 2022, excuse me. Next slide. Now, counselors, this slide says proposed planning assumptions. Some of this is not new to you, some of this may not be characterized as planning assumptions, but for whatever it may be, the second column there talks about 2025 to 2045. That 754 is the end year total population the county have chosen for 2045. I know it was a difficult vote for the council, but that was their direction. Now, the difference, because we are not really planning for technically 718,000, we are planning for the difference between the base and the end year. And what that represents is if you use the 2025 OFM medium base and go out to 2045, the difference would be 174, 674 new folks. That's what that represents and that's how this is presented. I kept the 90-10 urban and rural split. I mentioned that we're having discussion on that and we have to come back to council with some data and some further discussion with commerce staff and looking at our GIS, looking at past development that occurred when we did the Buildable Lands report, and Jose may correct me or chime in, we saw 8% of the new growth occurring in the rural. Is it 8% or 6%? So if you, like I said earlier, if you want to change that to 95-5, that's going to be your call, it's a policy call, but it's going to be based on some data. The last data we saw in 2022 was 6% of the new growth occurring in the rural area. You know, counselors, if I may say this and it may sound editorial, but the county boundary doesn't expand, it is fixed. So you can only expand into the rural area. GIS staff did mention that they're going to run the rural land capacity. It's not very similar to the urban model that they use. What they do is look at zoning and say to us and to the public, if the land as a zone were to further divide, what additional lot can be created? That's how we get to potential rural capacity, if you will. They're going to do that same thing and come back to us and we will present the outcome of that to you. That will help you in making this change to what the future urban rural split is going to be. The annualized population growth rate, this just informationally, was based on 1.4%. If you start from 2025 going all the way to 2045, you saw that, I think it was a recommendation by Councilor Young to take the 1.4. That's what we are presenting here. On the housing type ratio, I stated here that it's going to be based on plant densities. I will maintain that because we don't know what that is going to be yet. When we have the information from the cities, which they are, I'll give them credit, they are providing that information to us and we are going to run the model in the future. My GI, the GIS staff is telling us that the timeline for them to run the model based on zoning and based on the information provided by the cities is going to be by the end of October. They are finding some issues and we are going back and trying to rectify that or get additional information from our city partners. For example, in the compliance, you have mixed use, if I may use that as an example. If you go to zoning, what is it? We'd like to clarify that by reaching out to our city partners to help us determine what the split is and how, what are they seeing? Because we don't want to just say mixed use and ignore that as an example. The persons per household that I show here again is from the 2021 American Community Survey of 2.67. It's consistent with the persons per household that Scott Bailey used in the job forecast. So if in our discussion with commerce that changes, we will make that available and have the council consider that, again, with input from the public, everyone vetting that, and we can rely on where the source of that came from. Next slide. Counselors, this slide may be a little bit, I don't want to say confusing, but I want to make sure that it's well understood. We only showed the new jobs from 2025 to 2045, 73,500. The memo that Scott prepared, what it shows is that the end year non-farm, total non-farm job will be 269,000 by 2045. We are not planning for 269,000, we're only planning for the difference from 2025 to 2045. You have the memo, if you go back and review that, you can see that from 2025 to 2045, Scott shows us what the change is and it's represented as 73,500. That's where that came from. The job to housing ratio, you've already confirmed this is aspirational. You want us to get to 20 by 2045 to be at a one-to-one ratio? We hope as we complete this plan and in the next five years we look back, we will see how close we are coming to that ratio. The infrastructure here, I'm repeating what the previous council have decided, showing for residential, the 31.5% and 25% infrastructure deduction for both commercial and industrial. The, how we look at definition of what is vacant and underutilized, it was supposed to be indexed annually based on building value. When we had the overview of the vacant buildable lands model, our GIS staff did share what those current values are. It's going to change as they look at twenty twenty-four going forward. It's not going to remain the same. On the market factor, this is an area where there have been different variation of what the council, not this council, but what the previous council have done. In some plan update, they decided to do zero market factor. In some instances, going back to nineteen ninety-four, I believe the council or the commissioners at the time, if I recall, used a fifty percent market factor for industrial land, and that was appealed, just to say. And we were called, when I say we, the county was called on that, that that was excessive. And the growth board and the court characterized that as residential land in disguise. I don't want this council to repeat that. But one of the things that the Buildable Lands Advisory Group, when they looked at this issue, what they suggested is that because in the model itself, it says that ten percent of our vacant land will not convert, and thirty percent of our underutilized land will not convert, that that is inherently a market factor. And they didn't recommend that we use any new market factor going forward. That is a decision that this council would direct us what to do going forward. Our next slide. Councillors, I mentioned the two pressing legislation, House Bill that was approved both in two thousand and one and in twenty twenty-three. House Bill eleven-ten became effective in twenty twenty-three. I don't think any of the cities, including county, but I said, as I said earlier, eleven-ten doesn't, doesn't pertain to the counties. So I'm looking to the cities to see what they have done relative to this bill, and we will incorporate that information and make it public and come to you for your consideration of what they have done on it. On twelve-twenty, which became effective in twenty twenty-one, we are working through to make those changes in our code, and hopefully this council will approve that. That will be part of the future conversation. We will engage this council to say what will be the density going forward. As I stated earlier, the eleven-ten only pertains to commerce, Wausau, and Vancouver. Next slide. Jose is going to talk more about this in our next slide, but the Department of Commerce has created what they call a housing analysis planning tool. And that is to help jurisdiction to plan for future housing needs. There are several assumptions in the tool that we have identified where we need further conversation with commerce and our own local jurisdiction. The tool that they have shown now, they use twenty, is it twenty twenty-two? Twenty twenty as their base and going out to twenty forty-five. What we are saying to them is that that is a twenty-five-year projection, and we are not planning for twenty-five years. So they have to adjust that, or we will do that adjustment to get to twenty years. That is what is required by law, not twenty-five. The persons per household they use for twenty twenty-five projection is much lower than the two point six seven. I share with the council where that came from. I think what they're using is twenty-two point four, two point four-four. So we're having discussion with them to come to what I may call a good understanding. Because I believe that you will also observe that as we age and as we, as it becomes more difficult for family formation and maybe smaller immigration, I don't see that that will result, even if it results in a lower housing, lower persons per household, I'm not sure that that will require more housing units. Just intuitively, you will come to that conclusion. But it is an issue that we are beginning to discuss with commerce, and hopefully we will have a resolution before we get to what the actual capacity is. They also raise vacancy rate. What is it, six percent? Six percent? We haven't used vacancy rate or considered vacancy rate in our planning assumption, but they're recommending that. Again, as part of the issues, we are trying to have further discussion with them. They also raised the urban and rural split, as I mentioned, what would that be? So we are having conversation with commerce to resolve that, plus internal work we will do to come back to the council and seek direction from council on what that should be going forward. I will turn this other, this next slide over to Jose to just, again, this slide is also for informational purposes, and I don't think you will take any information out of this as gospel. So let me turn it over to Jose.
Okay, good morning, councillor. This slide is something we've repurposed from the Department of Commerce, but I think it demonstrates graphically in terms of the housing type, the apartments, multiplex and single-family, and then sort of the breakdown by income type, the ranges, zero to thirty, thirty to fifty, fifty to eighty, eighty to twenty, and a hundred percent, twenty percent plus, and sort of housing types that are associated with that. Just to give you an idea of what, based on the numbers that we're getting from commerce that I'll go into in a minute. So those categories roughly break out into a third, so that zero to fifty percent, the seven thousand, twelve thousand, and seventeen thousand number is roughly a third of those hundred fifteen thousand new homes that would be needed. That number is actually their, their twenty-five-year projection, not the twenty-year, so we're trying to resolve that. And then the fifty to a hundred twenty is roughly another third, and then the hundred twenty plus, the thirty-nine thousand nine-seventies, about thirty-four percent of the total. And these numbers all come from the housing analysis planning tool that commerce developed. If you can click that. So this is the tool that commerce has created for the, used statewide. Under step one, you can pick the jurisdiction, it has all of the jurisdictions in the state. The projection year, I think they used, they have arranged twenty forty-four to twenty fifty for the different counties that are planning under the Growth Management Act. And then step three is the population target within the range that OFM provided. And you can see the number there is what the county selected, the seven eighteen one fifty-four. And so once you do that, it sort of populates what that, under table two, it has the population target there, seven eighteen one fifty-four, and then it converts that into the total future housing need in twenty forty-five. And this is where the persons per household becomes a factor. Instead of dividing that total population target by two point six seven, they divided by two point four-four, and that's where they get that three hundred nine thousand seven hundred eleven total of the total future housing needed in, in twenty forty-five. And then they have the twenty twenty housing supply estimate, which is a hundred ninety-four thousand. Those numbers are constant. And so they've, they've broken that estimated housing supply out by income bands. And this is what we are trying to focus and, and plan for, is to provide sufficient units in those income band ranges, or allow for housing in, for that, that income band range. And so the last line there that's grayed out is the net new housing needed twenty twenty to twenty forty-five, and that's where that hundred fifteen thousand figure comes from. So it's actually a twenty-five-year need instead of the twenty-year. And so that's what we're trying to reconcile with, with commerce. So we'll see where we get with that. So we're having ongoing conversations. Do you have any questions about this at this point? It's a lot, I understand.
Real quick, can you go back to the two point four-four? Where did, just again, where did that come from?
So commerce, working with OFM, they, that's their twenty forty-five projection of what the persons per household will be in Clark County in twenty forty-five. And they're looking at sort of the age ranges, sort of childbearing years, and then the older population. And so the assumption is that we'll have that average household size of two point four-four in twenty forty-five. Historically, that has not, that's a significant change.
How is the change? What, what, what has it been historically here?
So in nineteen ninety-four, when we first started, I think we assumed two point three three for the twenty-year period. And we haven't seen, I don't think it's dropped below two point five nine. So we can get into more detail of that, but it, it both, using that persons per household both accommodates the projected population and any existing deficit is what commerce is saying in their, in their guidance. So it kind of does both. The assumption is that we have a housing deficit, and so using that methodology addresses that plus plans for the next twenty years of growth. And that also includes a six percent vacancy rate in that total. Go to the next slide, Rebecca.
The next slide actually is of next steps. We are not, again, seeking any direction today from council. We will come back following, following input from our local jurisdiction and orders and going through a hearing process and relying on additional data. We will come back to council asking for direction. When we get that, we will continue our coordination with our local jurisdiction on the allocation process, which we will come back to, through the Planning Commission and council to, to approve. And that would then lead us into development of alternatives that will be studied in the environmental impact statement, which is the last four item there. So what I would say is that we have been following our scope of work. We have published some dates that appear to be slipping, not by design, but because this effort takes some time, we have to get everybody on board, and that's why some of our time is slipping, but we are still on track. We still have until on or before June thirty, twenty twenty-five to complete this. One of the things that I must say is that whatever the council decide on assumptions, majority of it is, is aspirational. We are also required by statute to look back five years after your adoption to see how well we are doing and use that as a correction. I see some of these bills, I must confess, some of these bill, particularly eleven-ten, and to some extent twelve-twenty are very challenging. You know, for commerce, I'm not going to speak for them, but for them to allow four plaques, if that is what is called for in their single-family zone, or even Wausau, or even Vancouver here, which we call the largest city, to allow six plaques in their single-family zone, I would like to see that. And who is going to be building that going forward? This is just my own observation. And when we pass the housing code work, I don't know how many folks will rush here to build two ADUs on their lot. Some may take advantage of that, some may not. So it is all good to say you're not considering that. What about that? What is the significance of that? But I will assure you that when you make a decision on that code changes, we will circle back to say this is what that means now and run the model based on zoning. If there's any other assumptions you want to make, because there is a difference between the assumptions that is inherent in the way you run the model and the assumptions you make in planning. For example, urban rural split, that is not in the model. Persons per household, yes, we can use that to estimate potential housing unit, but that's not in the model. For example, there have been discussions about what about how we look at critical area deduction? We have had that discussion throughout the Buildable Lands Project Advisory Group. I have here what the councillors at the time approved, and I can make it available to all the councillors. I'm not asking you to go revisit that, but if you want to, and any of the cities are asking you to, we welcome to have that conversation. That's all I can say, and I will stop there and take questions that council may have.
Oliver or Jose, I was wondering on the persons per household, what factors about Clark County have made commerce lower that rate as low as it is?
I think a lot of it has to do with when OFM was here and they were discussing the population projections, the data that they were looking at about the aging population and the lower birth rate and lower levels of migration were the, probably the factors. And they were, they're also looking at sort of the age groups and projecting out sort of increased mortality. As our population gets older, you're going to have smaller households just through attrition. And I think that's, from what I can tell, those, those were the main factors.
That's interesting, because often with the, and I'm speaking just anecdotally, with older populations in a household, sometimes children or grandchildren end up occupying that household as well, and then it doesn't drive those numbers down. So it's kind of interesting that they assume that older population will drive it down.
You're correct, and that's some of the conversation we're having from, with OFM. There are the studies that I've shown, and I can cite it, and I believe Scott Bailey cited that, I don't know whether that is from the Urban Land Institute or from the Broken Institute, but I will research that. Who are also asserting that they don't see a decline in household numbers in the next two decades?
Makes sense.
Chair?
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you. I have, I have a few things. I know that this is informational, and there'll be other opportunities to seek our input, but there's a few things I'd like to react to. And, and just under the planning assumptions, in terms of those breaks between the cities, they are closing significantly. And if we are to assure that there are some green spaces between the remaining cities that haven't already closed up, we have to be very intentional about that. I know I was just looking at a recent proposal on a cluster development on Agland. I think it's a four hundred and forty-six acre single parcel, which is I think it's a 400 and 46-acre single parcel, which is pretty remarkable in itself, uh that's proposing 42, 1, 1 and 1/2 acre lots. So I don't know, yet, and it, it is a concern of mine. I believe when the vacant buildable lands work was being done, there was a look at, well, what is even developable in the rural land? Jose, I think you put some information together, we had a little back and forth on that, but just even looking around, just a cursory look around my area, that there was a lot of parcels that weren't included, and I think it may surprise a lot of people that you look across the landscape, it looks like it's all farmland or it's all rural, but it's already subdivided into five-acre parcels. And then with the cluster development, oh, which we allowed last uh comp plan update for on resource lands, actually, that's an area I'd like to understand and better how much resource land actually is being lost with the allowance of that cluster development. So it's just to say, there may be a lot more potential in the rural land for development than, than one might think, and also that it's a very aging population. So I think in the next 10, 20 years, there's going to be a huge transfer of property and a lot of uncertainty that goes along with that. Um, you know, a lot of these things that we're deciding, they're very technical, uh but they're foundational to what comes after. And I have been concerned that, about public engagement and that the pub, the general public that are on, the people that are not, it's not their job to be involved with that. Uh, but they may be renters, they may be very concerned about the availability of affordable housing. They're not engaged at this point, so that's a concern of mine. And uh, and I do appreciate, let's take the time that we need to take to get this right at this stage and not try to rush it and assure that the Planning Commission and the public have opportunities to participate in all of this. Um, you know, and while, uh, what was it, the 1110 doesn't apply to uh Clark County, is that correct? Um, you know, we're, um, an anomaly, I think, with most counties in that we have this huge unincorporated urban area that might as well be a city. Um, and that I think with the housing options, decisions that we may be making, it's not going to preclude the ability to do eightplexes or whatever. So we, we may not be required to do that, but I feel like we're on the road to really increasing that middle housing option. And so I, I agree that those are factors that need to be included in here. And then under the assumptions, I didn't see, uh, and I don't know to what degree uh climate change is going to impact any of these assumptions, but that's another uh significant uh thing that's uh gonna be determined. Um, you know, and I still do wonder about the vacant buildable land model and uh its accuracy. So it sounds as though we'll have a chance to revisit some of those assumptions. And I know that the committee that was put together, well, they meet for a, a year and a half or something like that, a long time. Uh, and it, I, it felt to me that they didn't really have, they might have missed the last two meetings, maybe the contract expired, but that there were still decisions that were uh yet to be fully vetted by that committee. But I feel like if those folks would be willing to come back together and give you some input, because they have a, a base of information on that. Um, so yeah, so I just think we need to be very accurate in the assumptions that we're, we're making that'll form the basis of all of this. Um, let's see, was there anything else? Yeah, so the 9010 assumptions, again, I think looking really as accurately as we can about what is developable, because it may be more than has occurred in the past. And the 7525 would be another thing that I'd be uh really concerned about, because I, we, we need to be uh developing housing options for where we're at right now. And where we're at right now is a crisis as far as affordability, which fuels uh homelessness as well. So I think, you know, the market uh hasn't succeeded in addressing that, and while the housing options we're looking at, like the, I guess what was considered the low-hanging fruit, uh, the, I think they'll, we'll need to look at more active interventions to ensure that there's affordability going forward. So those are my comments now.
Chair?
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you. Uh, you know, this is, I kind of keep saying this every step of the way through the comprehensive plan, but this is a big challenge. And I think that no matter what we do to this model, it is gonna be a pretty wild guess, to be honest with you, because there are so many variables. And, you know, one of the things that came to my mind when we're talking about the 2.44% persons per household, I'd be interested in how they develop that, because, you know, when we build these assumptions into the model, some of the stuff we're pulling from what we're experiencing here in Clark County, but then the question lies, you know, what do we put into the model that we're experiencing? And when do we step back and take a look at that and say, is that what we really want or need here in Clark County? So when I think about the 2.44% or per household, uh, it's interesting to me that when, you know, one of the slides showed the numbers per household continually increasing over time, and we know that people are having less kids. And so the reason that number is increasing is people aren't able to secure their own housing, and they're having to coexist in the same amount of housing. So when you look at that number, 2.44, is that reflecting us having to cohabit multiple households essentially into one space? Or is that, you know, not? And, and that comes into the question of, when do we just plug in what is anticipated to happen? And, you know, how do we look at that and see, what does that mean for us? And is that what we want or need in Clark County? So the other thing too is we've received quite a bit of information from different jurisdictions, different groups that are kind of poking holes into the model, but you know, I look at the current model as like very high level. And so my concern is, as we start to maybe get a little bit further into the weeds, what does that do for the model? Because it's such a high level right now. So what I'm suggesting is that there's probably a lot of mistakes, a lot of errors and, and bad inputs, but it's kind of working, I would say. You know, I mean, some people have said at this point that it's working, some say that it's not, but I don't think that anybody would argue that it's like way off the mark. And so as we start to, or if we attempt to kind of refine to a, a lower level, if we don't make sure and refine on all different aspects, it may cause the whole thing to tip out of balance. So this is a delicate process, I, I respect what you're having to go through with this, and um, you know, I hope, I hope we do our best as the council and staff in the incorporating the input that we're getting from our partners and from our other jurisdictions. I hope we can do the best that we can to make this right, because I don't want it to be off either way. You know, I, I, we have a housing crisis and we need to make sure that we are very careful not to exacerbate that problem. And, and at the same time, we have green spaces rapidly disappearing. So it's a tough, it's a challenge to go through. One of the questions that I would like to, you, you touched on it a bit, but is there a way that you could, and I don't expect that right now, but maybe that you could email us really the process on this specific part, on the, on the buildable lands model and, and report, not the whole comp plan in general, but just what you see, how many meetings that you see us having in workshop, workshop format, and then when you plan on bringing something for direction, you know, just so that, I just want to make sure, you know, to add to Counsel Marshall's comments that this, there's a, there's a lot of involvement that I hope to have in this process, and I want to make sure that we don't rush things to the point where we're missing some of that information. Um, but I also know that we have some hard deadlines coming, so we have to be careful about that. So if you could just give us kind of what you anticipate, kind of on paper, I'm a visual person, that'll help me better, I would really appreciate that. And
Chair Barman? No, I just wanted to respond to that, and I know Oliver and his team can respond, but um I will find uh the, there was a schedule that was discussed with council at the beginning of this process that had estimated dates for each of the work sessions and the public hearings for this process, so that we didn't have to come back and keep asking for them. So I'll find that, and I will resend that to the council, and of course, Oliver can add anything.
Okay, and that's, that's great. And I don't know if maybe that's changed since then, so if you make sure that
We'll update it.
Great, thank you.
Some dates might be a little bit flexible, depending on the number, if we need additional meetings with the councils, that might change a little bit, but the, the overall um date shouldn't be that different.
Okay, and then I, I would appreciate also if we can disseminate that information out to our partners and to the other jurisdictions for feedback, just to make sure that they may catch something that may be more extensive or see their comfort level with that schedule. I would appreciate that. But all in all, I appreciate this, it's been informative, it's a, a big thing to tackle, and I, I look forward to moving forward in the process.
Councillors, that's all we have. All your points well taken, and uh we will continue to collaborate with the cities and the uh schedule that um you alluded to, Councillor Young, we will update that. As I indicated, um, some of the previous uh timeline that we put out is shifting, some of that is just um internal workings, um, and the time it, it takes to come to some kind of a resolution, as Jose and I indicated, we have a dialogue or conversation or discussion with Commerce and uh staff, and it's taking us some time to come to some kind of a good understanding that we can report back to council, but we are making progress. Similarly, we are reaching out to our city partners to provide us the uh information that we need to help us go back to our GIA staff and get them ready to read on the module and rewrite the script for that model. It's taking them time, but I give them credit, they have made significant progress, and I have significant confidence in Jesse and his staff to uh get us to a point where we can come back to council and share the same information with, with you and everyone else. So they're making progress, um, and uh I'll leave it at that.
Well, are there any other comments from uh council or questions from council before we move on? Hearing none. Uh, shall we move then to the second work session? And thank you for